Good evening, everybody. This is the Combined Planning Board Meeting and Housing Production Partnership Committee. And this is February 11th, 2020. And our agenda, the Planning Board Meeting agenda is, number one, to meet with Housing Partnership to discuss the Housing Trust and proposed Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw, and then to consider revisions to the Open Space Subdivision article. I will give you a disclosure here that the hearing will open following this discussion about the Housing Trust. The hearing will open, but it will be continued without deliberation until February 26 at 7:30 PM. And that's because there was a, almost a mechanical kind of error in the posting. Everything was done correctly except for one sign in one place. So because of that, we have to continue the actual hearing, I will say at the time, but we still will be talking about the Proposed Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw tonight. And if you stay and enjoy the robust discussion, we welcome that. So with that, the Planning Board Meeting is in session, and I'll turn it over to Addie Mae Weiss and Housing Partnership.
Hi, everyone. Welcome. Thanks so much for coming tonight. So it's, we have Housing Partnership members here with us tonight, as well as what we've created a Housing Trust Working Group that was Housing Trust, Housing Partnership members as Planning Board members and some others in town, such as Frank Jenkins, who's had experience as past Housing Partnership Chair, and Heidi Doyle, our Town Treasurer, who lends her expertise, and Grace Shepherd has also provided some valuable input, and George Fisk. So I thank everyone for working with us on, as part of this working group. So we're opening the Housing Partnership part of the meeting. And we have Jennifer Goldson, who has been working with the Housing Partnership and Housing Trust Working Group since November to work on language for the Housing Trust. The Housing Trust was approved, Town Meeting 2019. The town voted to authorize the Select Board to establish a municipal affordable, municipal housing trust. And in the process of starting to write the language and figure out how the format should look and how the Declaration of Trust should be written, we realized we needed a little more expertise, and we reached out to Jennifer Goldson, who assisted the town with creating and writing the Housing Production Plan, which was approved by the state in 2017. So tonight, Ms. Goldson's here to talk a little bit more about the Housing Trust and what it is able to do in order to help us all understand exactly why maybe when we start showing language of what we've created for a draft amendment to the 2019 Article 15, which was passed, we're adding, this annual Town Meeting 2020 will be adding some amendments. So we're not, we have authorization for our Housing Trust, and we're amending to add some extra precautions and kind of security that make, to kind of add transparency to, we think it'll make it a better trust for the town.
Addie Mae, if I can just jump in. I just want to clarify that when I said Inclusionary Zoning, that is also the Affordable Housing Zoning Law Amendment. And there's a sign-in, so please sign in. It says Planning Board, but it will work for both committees here. And there's also a handout about the Open Space or Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw at the sign-in, so please sign in. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm happy to be here. And I know quite a number of you, and glad to see a good turnout for this. It's an important discussion. So I'm going to give you a little bit of just the background of what a Housing Trust is and why towns benefit from having them, and then I'll talk a little bit about the proposed amendments. So in the simplest terms, Municipal Affordable Housing Trust is a type of Housing Trust, and I'll explain what I mean by that. And it's really just a place to put funds that are dedicated to creating and preserving housing in the community. Sherborne adopted the trust already through Town Meeting last spring. To oversee a Housing Trust, you're required to have a Board of Trustees. So we're going to talk a little bit about the membership requirements. That's part of the amendments. And what does this Board of Trustees do? Well, first of all, you should know that they would be appointed by the Select Board, and their job is really to oversee any funds that are in the trust. And they act like bankers, really, deciding what to fund and what not to fund. But they also can come up with ideas of their own for things that could promote housing in the community. There are lots of Housing Trusts in the state already. In the '70s and '80s and into the '90s even, a lot of trusts were created across the state. This map's a little deceiving. I'll tell you what it really is about in a minute. There were a lot of trusts created through special legislation. There wasn't a way for a Town Meeting or a City Council to create a trust on its own. It actually had to go, the town, the community had to go to the state legislature and ask for special permission to create a trust. And there were a number of them until 2005, and they were all a little bit different from each other. There was no standard. So then in 2005, the state created, through Chapter 44, Section 55(c), created a way for towns and cities to create their own trust through their Town Meeting or their City Council. So they didn't have to go begging for permission to the state legislature. And that's the kind of trust that Sherborne adopted. And for the most part, trusts since 2005 have created that kind of trust. So when you hear the term Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, it's the kind of trust that was allowed to be created by your town without asking for the state's permission. But it comes with a list of things that are standard that trusts can do. There's a list of powers in the statute. And most trusts are created just enacting that statute. But some trusts, some towns and cities have decided that they wanted to customize some of those powers. And so we'll talk a little bit about that. That's really the subject of the amendments. So there are about 100 trusts now, and you can see in this map, and thank you, Marion, for the little laser here. It's a little faded, isn't it? I don't know, is it worth playing around with the lights at all, or would that affect the video? Okay.
Front lights off. Yeah, definitely worth it.
Other ones?
The other way.
Now we can all go to sleep.
Turn the back.
Maybe turn the back ones on, yeah. Okay, there you go. Maybe that's a little better, I'm not sure. Okay. So the areas with the hatched lines are, that go diagonal, are the MAHT, the Municipal Affordable Housing Trusts. And you can see there are quite a lot in Eastern Mass and all on the Cape. And then there are some kind of scattered in Central and Western Mass. The different colors you can see in the legend here are communities that have also adopted the, well, they're community, they're all the CPA communities, basically. And you can see that this map, because Mass Housing Partnership created this map, they were looking at who has a trust, what kind is it, did it predate the 2005 legislation or not, and does it have a CPA? So just, there's a lot of information here that you don't really need all of this information, but I just wanted to give you a sense that this is pretty widespread. So I just zoomed in on this map to show you in your area, so you can see Sherborne with the little red marker there. And you can see that a lot of the communities around you have housing trusts, the same type of housing trust, the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, including Holliston, Hopkinton, Ashland, Medfield. So you can, you know, I'm happy to share this presentation. This is, again, produced by MHP, Mass Housing Partnership. So if you want a copy of that map, I'm sure that either I could give it to you or they could. So why do these towns and cities create these housing trusts? So there's one purpose, and the purpose is to create or preserve affordable housing. And in Sherborne, based on the work that we've done together with the Housing Partnership, the Planning Board, and we did a series of telephone interviews, and of course, had done your Housing Production Plan as well. So we know that the focus here for this trust is really to create units that will count toward your 10% 40B goal, to get these units on the subsidized housing inventory, and then once you reach that goal, to help to maintain it. And I'm sure as you talk about the purpose of Inclusionary Zoning, you'll talk more about other ways you're going to help to maintain the SHI and get to that 10%. But that's really the purpose of the trust, is to have a pot of local funds that you can help to encourage the type of development you want to see, that you think fits into the community, and that you think will get you to that 10%, and then help you stay there. Any questions so far? So there's lots of different examples of projects that you can do with Housing Trust Funds. And even though these terms seem very broad, create and preserve, they do have a specific meaning. So these three examples I have, I know it's small, you can't read the text, the small text probably, but those are all examples of how trusts have been used to create housing in their communities. So the top one is Andover, and it helped to fund a development called the Chiver Road Development. And it was a homeownership opportunity, so it was affordable homeownership units. The middle one is Sudbury doing a groundbreaking where they're funding a Habitat for Humanity And then the lower picture is in Carlisle. They helped, and this was, the trust is usually, not necessarily in the case of Habitat, but in these other projects, these larger projects, it's usually one of lots of different funding sources. So this lower one is in Carlisle, and this one was to develop affordable senior rental housing. And so those are all examples of create. And the other term that you should know is you can also preserve existing housing. So if you have an existing unit that already counts toward your 10% requirement, sometimes they can be at risk of being lost. Sometimes the deed restrictions were not perpetual, and, or sometimes you can't find an owner to buy that's qualified. And you, if you don't find it within a certain time period, you could lose those units on the SHI. But a trust, one of the benefits of a trust, is that because it doesn't have to go back to Town Meeting to buy real estate or to step in, it can really help very quickly save those units. And so that's what we mean by preserve. Any questions on what I mean by create or preserve? So where does the money come from? It can come from lots of places. I know that you don't have the Community Preservation Act, but I put it on anyway because that is a funding source for many of the trusts. But there are lots of other ways you can have revenue that's dedicated to your trust. So one is, you'll talk more tonight, Inclusionary Zoning. For communities who adopt Inclusionary Zoning, they often, although not always, will include a way that a developer can meet the requirement without actually building the units, the affordable units. They can pay money to, it's called an in-lu fee, or an in-lu payment. So instead of creating the actual unit, they give the town money, and then the town has to figure out, well, where are we going to put this money? We don't want to put it into our general fund, because this is really meant to create housing. And so towns with a trust can then put that money right into the trust, and then the trust can be used to create the units. Negotiated developer fees. If you have development in town, and maybe you don't have Inclusionary Zoning, so it's not triggering affordable, you can sometimes negotiate for some fees, and those can go into the trust. Some communities have cell towers that they lease town property, and they take those payments and put it into the trust. You can use general fund, you can use, you can bond, municipal bond, you can do a tax override. I'm not suggesting you do these things, but these are just things that other communities have done. You can also take any tax foreclosed properties, and you can have the town designate the funds that are made. I know you have to cover the taxes too, the back taxes, but then you can take additional funds to put right into the trust. You can also take tax foreclosed properties, and maybe some of them could even be developed. You can put the property itself right into the trust. Any questions on where revenue comes from? So let's talk about what the amendments are all about. When Town Meeting voted to approve creating the trust, it really just adopted the way the statute's written up. But through discussions and the work that the town's done, there are certain benefits to adopting limit, I'm just calling it limiting language, that's what a lawyer would call it, to what the Board of Trustees can do by themselves. And I'll explain exactly what I mean by that in a moment. But in the statute, there are lots of things that the Board of Trustees can do with no authorization, which in some towns, that's perfectly adequate and works just fine. So I'm not criticizing the way the statute's written. But some communities find that for a number of reasons, it may be good to put additional layers of approval on certain powers that the trust can do. And so that's what, that's what this is about. So the limiting language primarily is taking two of the primary functions of the trust and requiring Select Board approval. So, I don't like that arrow there, it was bugging me. So one would be if the trust wanted to borrow funds against its own trust assets, this language would limit the ability of the Board of Trustees to do that on their own. They would need to go to the Select Board to ask for permission to borrow funds against their own assets. And the second thing is if they wanted to do any kind of real estate transaction, real property transaction, so if they want to buy property, sell property, lease property, that would also trigger in this amendment that's being proposed, the Select Board's approval. Any questions on that? The other thing that, I'm calling it limiting language still, because the statute just says there should be, you know, at least five members of the trust, of the Board of Trustees, and at least one of them shall be the Select Board member, a member of the Select Board. But other than that, it doesn't say anything about how it should be structured, or even if there's, there's no maximum limit, there's no other boards represented. So after talking with the working group and the interviews that we did, it seemed to make sense to put some language in specifying how big the Board of Trustees should be and who should sit on it, in general. And so the Select Board member would be the statutory requirement. A Planning Board member would be, through this amendment, also required. And a Land Acquisition Committee member would be a required representative on the board. The other piece of it would be having either two or four at-large residents. They could have certain specialties, but to say that the Board members should be either five or seven members, depending really on how many at-large residents you find to fill those at-large positions. Any questions on this?
Jennifer?
Yes.
The actual amendment says just five members.
I revised that, so I'm not sure. Oh, you probably wrote that piece before I gave you the revised one. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
So what we had discussed
Oh, yes.
Last month was, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that was the blurb, the publicity. Yeah, sorry.
So that's really it. It was pretty straightforward, but I, I just wanted to make sure to give you a little background before we launched into the amendments.
Okay.
Tell us, who you interviewed?
Sure. Yeah, I interviewed a couple members of the Select Board, and also a local nonprofit housing developer in the community. And I think that was it. And then the working group members also participated in giving us information.
If there's no other questions, then I guess we could, by the way, I should remind everybody, please identify, meetings being televised, please identify yourself and your address. Michael.
Michael Wester, 54 Forest Street. So there's just two changes that are coming before Town Meeting. That's all we're looking to address. Is that it? Just the two that you had up there.
Yeah, and I categorized them. So when you, if you look at the Bylaw we wrote, the powers are, there's actually three, at least three different powers that were amended, but I just, I paraphrased, so yes, although you'll see the language is more specific than I, than I put on the slides.
And I have one other, this is maybe broader than anything that this has to deal with, but while I was watching that, I was wondering about the issue of whether, if we have funds in this trust, is there any way that there's, this might well be on the scope of this, of whether if somebody is doing a 40B project or some sort of project, can we push them to do more than 25% of money from a trust? And is there some way to make, have that more muscle than just voluntary, like it would be nice if you did it, or is there some way that you can actually have a little leverage?
I'm happy to
...
I'm happy to answer that, if you'd like.
I'll let Jennifer answer as far as the, like, the legality. I'll say from kind of watching and learning over the last five years now, how 40Bs work in this town, and how affordable housing has worked in this town, and other towns from just attending MAPC planning sessions, I've learned a lot that there is a reason for that 25% number, even though we think it would make, it'd be great to have more units in a development that are affordable. There's some, some issues financially and socially which don't always work well, so we have some lessons that we've learned, that, that 25% has a lot of validity to it, even though we'd like to have more units. However, that being said, that's also why an apartment does get incentivized and is valuable because of the fact that if you have 100 units and 25 are affordable, we get to count all 100 on our SHI. So that's the situation where it's of value, but in a homeownership development, there hasn't been a lot of value in adding more than 25%. There's some things that backfire.
So, yeah, I agree 100% with what Addie said and how she explained it. Sometimes trusts for homeownership, you know, homeownership developments have been able to basically buy one of the condos, let's say, with the trust funds, put a deed restriction on it, or maybe a couple condos. It's expensive way to go about creating housing. So it depends on how significant the revenue is in the trust. But you could potentially buy condos that are created as ownership units, put a deed restriction on them, and then sell them to an affordable homeowner. So it's not really creating more affordable units within the development, you're really buying them. So you're not changing the calculation of the, of the developer's pro forma, if you will. You're buying it from market rate, market rate condo and creating an affordable unit. I'm not advocating that, I'm just explaining that it's a way to do it. It's just a very expensive way to create a unit.
Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff Walram, I'm Surrey, Lian. I'm also on the Select Board, but I'm speaking just for myself right now. And Jennifer was very patient as she interviewed me. So I have to decide whether I'm comfortable with the vague language or additional numbers, but I feel quite strongly that advisory needs to be on the board, because financial decisions affecting the town. I think there needs to be, Sherborne's not unique, because, you know, we have a nine-person advisory committee that really makes the financial decisions, just recommends the financial decisions of the town. So I feel quite strongly that there needs to be advisory person, whether it has to be the manager or not, I'm not, I'm not deciding yet, but I would be more comfortable if I need to fire the additional Select Board member, permanently advisory member also.
So I'll just address that concern real quickly, that we, the statutory requirement requires a Select Board member, the, and we felt the Planning Board member and the land acquisition, as far as we chose not to be too specific and, because we felt that by, once you've, once it's in the Bylaw, it makes it harder to change who, what constitutes the Board as our needs change as a town. So while we debated the concept of having advisory be specified, we agree that there is value, and most likely when the Select Board is selecting its membership for the initial housing, municipal housing trust board, Board of Trustees, it probably will be an advisory member. But as our needs change, as we potentially are in a different financial situation, then we might, something might otherwise happen. But Grace, if you'd speak.
Grace Shepherd. What is the rule about advisory members being members, committee members, as opposed to attending as whatever category? I don't, I don't remember the language. I don't think you can actually appoint an advisory member to a committee, but they can be present and participate.
Yeah, I can address, I got thrown off by the Land Acquisition Committee for that very reason, although advisory is a member of capital budget also.
That's, that's a lot, because that, yeah.
I understand, but this is also a financial decision making.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to your question, you can ask Mary Walsh.
Jeff, I agree with your concept, but I guess just know that, I'm pretty sure it's in the Bylaws, that you cannot say advisory one of you is going to be a member of another committee. You can participate.
I don't know. I don't know if I
That is, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Frank.
Frank Jenkins, Westwood Avenue. The question about debt incurred by the trust, as to whether or not it is ultimately a town obligation or strictly just a trust obligation, has been debated about. In this particular version of the Bylaws we're talking about here, I understand that the trust can borrow money against the assets of the trust, but those, the borrowing, the debt that occurs is not part of the town's obligation, debt obligation?
So it's not clear about liability. I know that the town has asked their town attorney to weigh in, and there was some discussion around, it may be, there's no case law. It may be viewed differently depending on if the trust has the town's tax ID or not, and if the trust is covered on the town's insurance or not. And it was unclear, but they did advise, or I wouldn't say they advised, but I read between, reading between the lines, it seemed prudent to put some language in. And it's pretty standard language in the Bylaws about liability. But it basically says that neither the trustees nor any agent or officer of the trust shall have the authority to bind the town, except in the manner specifically authorized herein. So I don't know how that would be interpreted. So I don't, I don't want to mislead you and say that there's no liability. But I also did some digging with some colleagues and asked around about this idea of having a different tax ID from the town. And both of the colleagues I asked, who work with a lot of trusts as well, said that they have never heard of a trust taking a different tax ID than the town, and that all but one of the trusts they were familiar with was covered by the town's liability insurance. The only one was Sudbury, because they also do monitoring, they hire their services out to monitor for developers, yeah.
So any way to get a clearer answer to
I don't know if you all want to weigh in. I'm just interpreting what the town attorney had advised.
I mean, this is really important. I think at Town Meeting, I think people have been quite concerned if the trust can borrow from borrow money without Town Meeting approval, that they may be not supporting it.
I think, so Heidi, do you want to say anything? Because I know this was something that we discussed, and we did have Town Council weigh in, and we did look at language of other housing trust, municipal housing trust in other towns, and anything?
Heidi Doyle, I'm Building Street. This is called a municipal housing trust, I think for a reason, because it's considered municipal as part of the town. It's not its own separate housing trust. If its own separate housing trust would have its own tax ID, it'd be totally independent. And I think what Jeff was finding on it is they do tend to use a town's tax ID. Question about debt, I think, is what town's tax ID. Question about debt, I think, is what assets does, they can only borrow up to wherever assets they have. And in this case, it doesn't foresee that, but trust itself is going to have a lot of assets. You're going to have money to get something going. But unless you have a huge kind of development that you're saying, I'm putting that up to get money, I think you are looking that it would impact town's borrowing potential account towards any of the town's borrowing, if they borrowed money. Now, it would not count on the debt purchase. I mean, it sounds, if you're going to do a borrowing and you're going to pay your own debt service. So I think that it could be very clear that this was going to function, that there would not be an impact on the town's debt as far as actual cash or money. I think that's going to be what the goal is to do that. The other thing is, I don't think this says at all that you can have to go out and borrow. It's saying any, you have to go to the select board. The select board is the one that's going to have the say allowing whether there can be any money. And again, they represent the town, and it's a municipal trust.
Right. And I think that was really the, that's the concern a lot of people have. And that was the main reason for coming back to town meeting this spring with these amendments, which insert specific language, which, you know, as Ms. Goldson presented, had some limiting language, which adds requirements in several instances for select board approval, which are not included in the state statute. So we are adding some extra checks and balances here. And the goal would be that this is, as Heidi Doyle has said, this would be a municipal affordable housing trust. So it is a town entity. And we would, you know, make sure that the trust is acting on the benefit, for the benefit of the town and being mindful of that.
Yeah, I'm just, just looking at, in the powers, section four in the power section number 11, it says, "With select board approval, the trustee recommendation to borrow money on such terms and conditions." So it says with approval. And then elsewhere, as it says, it's a municipal entity. It does seem like town council's opinion, to Frank's point. I think town council's opinion's going to be important.
Right. Chuck, did you have something?
No, it's, actually, listen, a quick question and a comment of Jennifer's presentation. One of the funding sources is CPA. And I'm trying to remember, Grace, was it 20 years ago, the town considered CPA and-
It was so long ago, I don't remember.
Yeah. It's long enough ago. I think it lost by about 60 to 40. There were two concerns. One was CPA money, it was a question about whether or not the state was going to fund it. People questioning the state's commitment. The other was taxing ourselves in advance for payments that we really hadn't spent much money on in the past, housing, recreation, and historic preservation. This may be the time to reconsider that. If we're going to use this, we might want to consider adopting CPA primarily to fund affordable housing. The state funding has been erratic, but there is state funding. But that, it's, there's been discussions, at least at the select board, about revisiting CPA. And I think affordable housing may be one of the primary justifications for it.
Grace?
The other thing, Chuck, is that in the years since then, the state has revised usages for CPA. The town did want, want to be told it had a certain percentage in each category, calling this thing, it's much closer now. The town would have much more control, which would suggest that it would be more possible now.
Are there any other questions about the municipal affordable housing trust? If not, I'd like to make sure we have time for, yes?
Michael, that's a 54 Forest. This may be a trivial question. It's legalese. This phrase that you use, and you quoted, "With select board approval from trustee recommendation", is that just legalese for the trustee approval of trustee's recommendation or something like that?
Basically means that the trustee, the board of trustees, has to make a recommendation to the select board. The select board doesn't have full control of the trust.
So it's just an often legalese to a way-
Yeah, pretty much.
Or I guess lawyers like it, or it's okay.
Well, if there's no further questions, I'd like to move on to the planning board hearing to pass it along to John Higley. I've asked Ms. Goldson to remain for the next 45 minutes in case there, because I do believe that there are some crossover instances with the inclusionary zoning discussion and kind of how it relates to housing trust. So she's, has her expertise available to ask if there are questions. But I'm going to pass along to John Higley.
Okay. Well, I think now's a good time to officially open the, the zoning hearing for the affordable housing warrant article, which is the inclusionary zoning warrant article. And I'll take a motion to continue it without deliberation to February 26 at 7:30 PM.
So moved.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, passes. So with that, now that the hearing has been continued, now let's talk about affordable housing. And as I said, by the sign-in, there's a, should be a copy of the warrant article. So the, the purpose of the, of the purpose of the warrant article is to provide, to create, to provide housing opportunities, and particularly for eligible households with low and moderate incomes, and in a mix in, in a geographic distribution. And also to create that housing so that it is eligible for subsidized housing inventory for the SHI. And that latter feature of this article is to provide housing that's, counts in our SHI goals for the 10% goal. If we get to 10%, we're still going to be building other houses, market rate houses. So we want to keep that 10%. So this is a way, as we look through decades, this is a way to have funds to keep up with affordable housing goals as the market rate houses are built over time. And also to provide, directly provide affordable housing built in those subdivisions. We have a subdivision by law now. This provides, this provides a means to keep us on track with our housing production plan goals from two houses on through subdivisions. So in looking at the orientation, just the layout of this warrant article, it describes the purpose of, the purpose and intent. It is, and the applicability is any subdivision development of two or more detached single-family homes, of the open space subdivision development, the planned unit development, the PUD, and any multi, multi-dwelling EA project. So this applies to wherever we're building single-family homes. It, it does not apply to the construction of single-family homes on individual lots if the lots were in existence prior to the effective date of this, of this section. Any development that's located on contiguous lots created by an A&R approval not required plan within five years prior to the date of submission of the A&R plan will be subject to this bylaw. So, so the, the next thing is, it's, it's mandatory for any development. This article, this warrant article would make it mandatory for any development that's in this, that's applicable in this section. And then there's a formula for the project, for the size. So if we're going to add, require the addition of affordable housing or funding it, there's a table here that the project size of one to five, then there's, there's no affordable unit required. But there is a table or discuss, there is a requirement for less than six dwelling units in a, in a later section. So the fractional, so looking at the table, one to five is zero, six to 12 is 15%, 13 to 17 is 15%, 18 to 20 is 15%, and 21 overs 20% affordable units are required. And, and it's rounded up. So if, if a number comes up with a fraction, it's rounded up. So then the methods to provide housing units are onsite. So construction of affordable housing units within the development will be permitted by right. They have to be, the onsite affordable units have to be proportionally distributed throughout a development in terms of the location, size, type, size, number of bedrooms, in accordance with the DHCD, the local initiative program or LIP requirements. And then onsite units have to be located conveniently to the development's amenities, the same as the market rate units. So that's, that's, that's required for it to be considered in compliance for the SHI requirements. Offsite units can be created on a, on a lot that's not part of the project. It's not on the same parcel. An offsite unit can be constructed or be an existing dwelling unit that's rehabilitated or repurposed. So it could be just simply buying something and, and bring it, buying something and rehabilitate it, or just buying something and repurpose. And I think we, Jennifer mentioned an example of that. So they don't have to be in the same zoning district as the development. The required number of offsite housing units can be created at multiple locations and consist of a combination of newly constructed, existing, and either rehabilitated or repurposed. The location or locations are, are subject to the approval of the planning board. Offsite units may be constructed or converted as a duplex or multifamily building offering two or more units. If an area of single family, if in an area of single-family homes, the final result must be that the premises, including the primary building, accessory structures and driveway have to appear as a single-family home, and that's as determined by the planning board. So I think that's, that's kind of, there's, there are more requirements. That's kind of, I think, the key thing, the key features. The payment in lieu of, we talked about this in the past and came up with a formula. So in a, a fee in lieu of affordable housing units shall be made to the servant affordable housing trust that we just talked about. For projects with six or more units, the payment shall be according to the following formula, N times M minus A. That's, that equals the required in lieu payment, where N is the number of required affordable units, housing units. So the number of affordable housing units times M, which is in this formula, the median sale price. And we, M, it also could be just, and this is the language, I think, that we left open, but M can just be the number of market rate units, and without regard to the, the unit type. And the data for M is the, is determined by the board of assessors. So that, that's the, so M is the median sale price, and it can be the price for the market rate units. So then A is the THC determined selling price for an affordable unit in the, in the proposed, for the housing in the proposed development. So, so the number of affordable units times the median sale price minus the, the selling price of an affordable unit. So then that same idea is used for, for projects fewer than six units. Then, then it's TU in our formula here. So it's total units proposed times M minus A. So it's, it's, so that way we can come up with a number that is used for a portion of, of a development where it's smaller than six units. I think that, so that, I think in terms of the timing, we talked about the timing of the payments and, and, let's see, so the timing should be according to the table for completion of affordable housing units. And that was in paragraph one. I'm looking for it, this in paragraph one. Anybody see that? I'll get back to that. So there's a payment schedule that's, so it's consistent, but I'm lost in terms of where that is.
John, are you okay if I just ask Jennifer to just give a quick overview on what inclusionary zoning is, since I'm sure she's given that spiel many times and probably can say it quicker and easier than I could?
Sure, yeah, sure. I'm happy to. So inclusionary zoning is a very common zoning mechanism to create affordable units in market rate, what would normally be market rate developments. So they're going through your regular zoning bylaw, and this, this bylaw says exactly what triggers it. But in this case, you're triggering, it's a six, it's triggered by six units, basically. And it's just a really a way to keep pace. A lot of communities like it because it helps you keep pace as new developments are built. You're including a certain percentage, 15 or 20% in the case of this bylaw, of affordable. So you're always staying ahead of that 10% once you get there and, and trying to get there in the meantime.
That's hopeful. Yes?
Darrell, here's a 54 Forest. I haven't read through all of this, but is there something that defines what a project is so that something could be artificially divided into three houses, three houses, three houses, three houses, going to trip these sections?
Well, there's two things, I guess. One is it does, it does talk about A&Rs. That's a way of dividing up parcels. So that's, if they already exist, then, then they're not subject to this. So, but in the future, it's, in the, in the future, I guess it's, if it's, if it's a subdivision, could you do multiple subdivisions or sequential subdivisions? I guess the answer's yes.
Skirt this?
Yeah, no, it doesn't skirt it. You still have to, there's still a requirement.
I'm asking whether there's a legal construct that someone would get around this by calling, this one's called water, this one's called, you know, happy acres, and this one's called something else. And as a subdivision, it might be 20 units, and therefore should have affordable component, but it's been divided up into the-
The chart does address anything more than one house. So if it's, if it's not, maybe everybody can't see, but on page two, affordable housing units required by project size, if it's between two and five, there's not a percent affordable unit to be created. But then further on, when there's the payment in lieu, there is a calculation that is applied. So there is some requirement towards, I guess, adding some funding towards the affordable, the funding would go to the affordable housing trust, which then would assist us in a different way in trying to help keep pace. So if it's a development that's a five-unit subdivision, well, we're not going to require them to create a whole other, an extra, build a, an affordable unit, but we do require some payment in lieu.
All right. That's still not exactly what I'm asking. Thank you.
You only talked about the 15th of 20%.
Yeah, I'm just talking about, in totality, it ends up being 13 units. But it's been chopped up to look like separately.
It's still always 15%.
But it's still, it'd be caught by the formula.
There's no financial advantage to doing that.
They would have a payment in lieu.
If it's greater than 20 and they carve it up at the two tenths, then you have 15% versus 20. And that's the only little catch that-
No, I'm talking about-
Nobody's saying it is caught otherwise.
Two to five.
And we're not the first town to, I mean, it's something that is pretty common in almost every town, which has inclusionary zoning. It, it happens. It happens a lot of times if it, it's usually triggered by twelve units or more, and then the communities are seeing a lot of eleven-unit developments, and so that's why we did try to address it by lowering the number for the standard for it to be triggered to six units.
I have a question and a comment about, in the section of applicability on page The, under applicability, and A is any subdivision development of two or more detached, single-family B is open space subdivision development approved pursuant to a special permit. At the same town meeting, of course, we're trying to change the open space subdivision bylaw such that it's not a special permit. So then this would become moot, and I don't see the necessity in this, for the purposes of this bylaw, to specifically enumerate an open space subdivision, separate from any other subdivision. And the open space subdivision that we're proposing, and any subdivision for that matter, could with a special permit include, say, duplexes or accessory apartments. So I think maybe we have to leave that a little more, that language just a little more broad to apply to all subdivisions, no matter of what type, because we could have open space, we could have others, we want this to apply to all. And if there is a special permit, the, for example, in the open space subdivision bylaw that we may get or may not get to in a minute, there is a special permit possibility to put in duplexes or accessory apartments. If that were the case, we make clear in that bylaw that those units would, those accessory structures of duplexes would count as residential units. So for the purposes of the affordable housing bylaw, they're units in the subdivision, no matter how they're built. So I don't see the need to specify single-family homes or anything else, special permit, just it should be covered by the language, any subdivision.
But doesn't do any harm, I guess. It's by specifying any subdivision development of two or more detached, single-family homes, and then specifying, and then adding those that are subject to an open space special permit.
Problem is at the same meeting, we're changing that to not special permit, hopefully.
Hopefully.
But.
So, but if this language, I'll just say that it's not approved yet, so until it passes, then this doesn't do any, there's no, there's no negative consequence to having that language in there.
But if it does pass, it kind of muddies the water.
I don't see how it really.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I'm sorry to butt in, I didn't write this or anything, but you could just strike in B, open space subdivision development approved, you could strike pursuant to an OSD special permit, you could just say approved under section four point five of this zoning bylaw, then it doesn't say, because you're not changing the section number, right?
Right, that would fix it, because whether it's a special permit or not is irrelevant for the purposes of this bylaw.
John?
At least it seems to me.
Darrell, and then Grace.
The definition, single-family dwelling is a big deal for the fields at Sherbrooke, so I would be very careful about assuming that that will apply to duplexes or something because that's not housing or any unit.
I agree, I mean, I'd rather see, rather than detached, single-family homes, two or more residential units, because they can be defined in different ways.
That happens our experience.
I'm sorry. I can barely hear you, but tell me again, what's the objection to that language?
If you use single-family dwelling, it is distinct, it appears, although there is much debate around the issue, and it seems to be distinct from a duplex, so I think residents are.
We're using residents all year.
Okay, Grace.
I find it perhaps two components, but my question is a very simple one. Is there any kind of subdivision that you don't want to have inclusionary zoning? You've got land being built upon, multiple housing of some sort, that's a subdivision. Is there any variety of the term subdivision that you don't want to have inclusionary zoning?
I think there could be situations where financially it doesn't work within, that's why we do allow offsite units to be created, so there are scenarios.
So you want inclusionary zoning, but you give them the choice of building an onsite or off.
Correct.
Or money.
Correct.
Okay, but it's still, is there any kind of subdivision?
I can't think of it.
That you don't want this bylaw to apply to?
Well, a single duplex standing out on its own is not a subdivision by definition, so that doesn't, that's kind of irrelevant, but yeah, that's my question exactly.
Because I think that what you do want, if every subdivision applies just to inclusionary zoning, with these specific details, if it's very small, it won't apply, or it would be apply in a different way, if it's larger, it applies where in percent, those are the details. If they don't want it on the land, it's going somewhere else, or you pay money, those are the details. But the basic statement is if you're going to build a subdivision in Sherbrooke, we would like to have inclusionary zoning applied. So why not say it?
I can't argue with you. I think you're right.
I think there's a terrible tendency to read other towns' bylaws, which are written by lawyers who are making money for giving them work. Sometimes, just say what you mean.
What's wrong with lawyers making money?
Nothing at all.
Jennifer, I have a question regarding the in lieu payments. That formula, is that a standard formula?
There are lots of different formulas. I like this one because it's very straightforward, and you don't have to go consult the book of, you know, construction costs, and it's easy to figure this out, so.
Okay, I just have another question. So under M, if the average house in the past two years sold for eight hundred thousand, and it was determined that the selling price of an affordable unit would be four hundred thousand, and a developer wanted to build a six-unit subdivision, that's over two million dollars that would be asking from them, correct?
I didn't follow all your math, so the six.
Yeah. And to me, that seems like a huge ask, that seems like an awfully big number, and from the very beginning, I always had a concern about the size of that number. I would be interested in looking at other formulas.
Yeah, there are a lot of formulas out there. Some of them are very complicated to interpret. The thing I do like about this is the ease of interpreting it. I could figure the price out for you right now with my DHCD calculator. But the other thing I like about it is you are more likely to be able to create a unit for the money that you're getting. A lot of the formulas out there end up not providing enough money to actually, so you want, so the idea of the payment is so that the trust can then have funds to create units.
Well, I'm fully aware of that, but.
But the reason that that formula creates enough money is because it's actually tied to the median of, the median sales price current, and then it subtracts out what does it cost for, or what's affordable to, so it makes sense, it is expensive, but I also would say.
Again, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, it's okay. I would also say if it's too expensive, then that may be an incentive for the developer if they think that they could build the actual units cheaper on their own property, or find an off, you know, offsite option that may give them the incentive to provide the actual unit over giving the trust money.
I agree with that as well. The number just seemed awfully high, and who may, or who will be paying for this are the new residents of our town. I'd like to see if we could find a way to bring that number down a little bit.
I think you miscounted.
No, I didn't.
You forgot to divide by six. You forgot to divide by six, I think, when you were doing it, but it's hard to do in a plot.
Well, that's your question, if you have six units.
You're right.
Correct.
If you look at page four, B, you see where you are, right?
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Michael, I'm right.
He's missing a little bit of four.
I thought you were talking about less.
No, it's fine.
What it's good to do, though, Chris, is it could cause developers to develop high-end units, you see, because you're only subtracting the average sales price, so if I create four units that are not affordable, except for two million dollars, that I can spend an hour for you to sell.
I agree with that as well.
It ends up, it has a positive impact, I think, on the kinds of development you attract.
There's, there's no question. It still looks like a big number to me.
Yeah.
You forgot to do your, I dispute that, I think you got it right, because you take the number of units required, which N equals six times point one five, which gets you a little over one unit. That's why it's one times the four hundred thousand and not six times the four hundred thousand. So it's still only going to be that, we can just obviously do it offline, but I don't think you're generating such a large number, because the N there is not six, it's the number of required units, which is six times point one five.
Oh.
Darrell.
Where'd you say that?
It's in the table.
It doesn't matter.
The number of required units is N for B.
The number of affordable housing units.
Yes.
Two pages before, that other table.
And then you have to go back to the table. Okay, six times point one five.
Yeah, so I guess in the past discussions, we've gone around on the same topic, but come up with a better formula, come up with a different, we could round down, we could do different things to reduce the burden on the developer, but at the same time, we've got a goal. We want, for all the reasons for this, we need to fund it, so.
I was going to say that this discussion about the financing, my concern was that it can be so much cheaper to just pay into the trust, that that was my concern about someone artificially breaking up the subdivision into discreet little pieces and just having to give a very small amount that the trust would never be able to build, that they could otherwise incorporate into a subdivision on a larger size. So I'm actually glad if that number is motivated.
Well, that's why it's at that rate, but it sounds like this is a useful hearing. I think it sounds like if we had some more examples, we did talk about other ways of doing it so that, so that the calculated number creates less burden for the developer. In the past, our discussions have been biased towards funding the trust, so we can play with that either way, but.
Have you actually done work to see what it costs to create a housing? I mean, you're implying that it'd be cheaper to maybe make it, trust a building unit, but I'm just curious, as part of that past work, have you figured out what it would cost to actually create an affordable unit in our town, and whether the formula here, if people broke it up, let's say, and just would rather pay rather than use up a unit in their own project, whether that money generated is reasonable, given what it would cost to create an affordable unit in this town and how hard it is to find it, versus we want to have a clearer signal that we don't want to get money into the trust, and we'd rather they do the unit, so it's less, more practical and more real to us, and we'd rather even make the formula a little bit more, so that for the smaller ones, this is only the cash stuff, there's only the six or less, and it also doesn't, and it might deal with the thing that Darrell brought up, of an incentive to break up a twelve into, or a twelve into three, five, or whatever it is to break it up into that, so at least, whether we want to have a larger number than it does generate now, so that we get it done and don't create it.
And that number is going to vary depending on the point in time in terms of destruction cost, land cost, but I think the fundamental point is, this formula has an impact on whether or not you incentivize people to build the affordable unit or to pay into the trust.
Well, that's what I want to know.
That's why I think calculations and examples are critical.
Yeah, I just want to know whether it makes sense to have it, and which way we should have the incentive go, because I'm not sure if we want to get into what it takes to create affordable units versus just push the developers to do it, because I don't know how practical it is for us to do a unit here or there.
We did hear at a MAPC regional meeting, I should call it, here this morning, which was all about affordable housing, that Addy organized with our MAPC rep, that in fact, in practice, developers tend to much prefer to make a payment in lieu than, you know, muddy their development with these affordable units, to put it bluntly. So we do have to make it, we do have to kind of disincentivize paying in lieu and incentivize, or if you're going to pay in lieu, you know, make them really pay for what it would cost to put affordable, so I'm less worried about the developers than Chris is, but, you know, we'll see how that plays out. I have, if I can change the subject a little bit, on page two, I'm having a problem with the clarity or lack thereof of a point under D one, onsite units, construction of affordable housing units within the development shall be permitted by right the following conditions. Condition A is onsite affordable housing units shall be proportionately distributed throughout a development in terms of location. So far, so good. But, and unit type, how do you proportionally distribute unit type, size, and number of bedrooms? I'm not sure what that means exactly. Does that mean that the affordable units scattered throughout the development should have the same variation in bedroom number, the same size, the same type?
Well, the intent, I mean, we can change the wording of the sentence. It says, the first part shall be proportionally distributed throughout a development in terms of the location, okay? And then it said, then it means, it means that unit, the units shall also be of the same unit type, size, and number of bedrooms.
You know, that may be.
That's the intent.
That is, I think I understand the intent, I think you have to break up that sentence to make it clear, but.
But if there's different, if there's different types, different sizes, and different numbers of bedrooms in the market rate units, they have to be, the affordable units have to be, should be distributed the same way.
Okay. What I, what I've heard from other sources is that in order to make this work well, that, and to make it attractive for a developer to include the units in his own development, in some cases that, you know, were discussed at a conference I was at last week, to be specific, the development did allow affordable units to be of a smaller size, and maybe not the same number of rooms, but the important thing was that the external, the external style, appearance, materials, material quality, and everything else should be the same as the market rate units, because I don't think it's realistic to ask a developer if he's going to do some five-bedroom houses to make some five bedrooms affordable, and I think that'll, we may shoot ourselves in the foot if we ask that, because we really want affordable units that are not only affordable to buy, but affordable to maintain. Another point that came up this morning was that it's really important that at least, that the size is not as important. want affordable units that are not only affordable to buy, but affordable to maintain. Another point that came up this morning was that it's really important that at least, that the ex, that the size is not as important as the external appearance and quality. And the basic quality, the most important quality issue is really the infrastructure, appliances, the heating, the cooling, the insulation, and the energy efficiency. So I think we might, you know, consider modifying A a little bit and.
Well, we, we actually, in our past discussions, tried to simplify the language down. It sounds like we could simplify it even more, but the intent, we, by saying in accordance with, you know, Department of Housing and Community Development Local Initiative Program, we could just say, shall be in accordance, just take, take out all the other stuff and just say, shall be in accordance with G H C's local initiative program requirements.
Yeah, that would be fine because further, further down on page four, under E, location and comparability of affordable housing units, said it could be shortened, but I think this is actually pretty good. There, they have to, they don't say that they have to be the same size, but they say they have to comply with LIP Design Construction Standards, blah, 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 indistinguishable from market rate units as viewed, viewed from the exterior. That may be hard with different sizes, but B is important. You do say that they're equivalent to market rate in terms of design quality, construction, and then all the infrastructure components that are important for energy efficiency. So I think it's in there. It's just that I thought it wasn't clear in this first paragraph. Or it's kind of misleading. Maybe that's what, that's what's intended, but I think it needs to be a little more flexible. You could solve it in A just by ending the sentence in terms of location and then.
Okay, because you're saying, because on page four and section E, it does that?
As long as you keep that.
I think so.
I think so.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
That's fair.
Okay. Daryl, did we address your comment about single-family homes back in the original, right up front in the applicability section? In one, I'll get it funded here. In one A where we say any subdivision development of two or more detached, single-family homes.
I think by stopping the sentence at any subdivision development period, to Grace Shepherd's point about keeping it simple with the language, I think that sort of takes care of
Yeah.
some of the concern.
Does that?
Which part?
Yeah, that's.
So in, we're talking about section 4.9, B, on page one, B, applicability, 1A, says any subdivision development, it now says of two or more detached, single-family homes. And you would express concern about specifying single-family homes.
Well, if you want to include duplexes or some, or townhouses, then that might not apply because there's so much to be done.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, what I was originally proposing is that A and B be consolidated into one simple statement, any subdivision development period.
Okay, and that's consistent with.
Because again, Sherborne, and it was, the court evaluating it was clearly inclined to support affordable housing, and they felt that townhouses were not single-family homes. We felt that they were. There's discussion that there's support for that, but that's not how we made that decision. So I think if you want to be safe, we would simplify it.
Okay. Good. Got it. Okay. So I found that there is a, I found a reference to the timing of construction. There's a section I on timing of construction on page six. So this is referenced earlier, but, so I need to tie that together, just so it's consistent. So section I says, has a timing of construction to make sure that affordable units are constructed along with the market rate units. That was something that came up earlier.
Frank?
Is there anything in here that deals with when payment will be made by the?
Yeah, that's.
If they elect to pay.
Yeah.
When you pay.
Page six does address the timing of payments.
I'm looking for, I know it's here.
Three, eight.
Okay, yeah, so it's on.
On page six.
So under I, on page six, under I, three. Tell me again, Chris.
Upon the release of any lot, in case of a development other than subdivision, upon issuance of the first building permit or prior to the closing of each market rate unit, there's, if there's a payment in lieu, the total amount divided by the total number of market rate units in the development and a resulting quotient shall be payable at or prior to the closing of each market rate unit.
Close sale.
Yeah. At this time, I think we're nearing somewhat, we're at an 8:30 mark, and I would like to thank Jennifer Goldson for coming this evening and release her so she can go home to her family and her girls. So thank you so much, Jennifer.
Thank you. Michael.
So in their next phase, I'm trying to figure out where we ended up on this formula and the incentive for paying versus creating units. Is this something you're going to get some more work on and decide whether you need to give incentive to people to build units by sticking a coefficient of 1.2 times N minus A? Or where are you going with that? I mean, one could just stick in a little multiplier there if you want to push it that way, or how you, is this something you're just going to work on for your next version?
Yeah, well, essentially, we do have a multiplier in there.
What do you have?
Well, I mean, it's the formula that we're just talking about, but the.
That's what I remember you and Tom told me about, that M minus A alone is maybe not enough of an incentive to have people build it themselves versus pay to the fund and how you, and where you're going in terms of getting enough information to see if that formula works as an incentive, or you could stick in 1.2 times, times M minus A if you really want to have a clearer signal. If that's what your experience tells you, that you want to force them to build it versus pushing us end up with money in the fund. And I haven't studied, I haven't been part of this enough to go whether which way you really want to clearly push people.
Well, let's see. I think that's, Michael raises a good point. I will, I will say from our discussions in the past, I'm, I'm biased towards the cash. Not because I think we're great, as a town, we're great at building housing units, but because I think there's going to be opportunities to buy existing housing. And, and I think the, the ability to just, to, to buy a condo at a, at the E8 development site on Coolidge is a good opportunity in other, other places in town. So I, I think that's another, that's another way to add affordable units over time, is to, is to buy housing units.
And you think the math is there that if you're going to buy an affordable unit, that if you've got, let's say, the 900,000 minus the, whatever the, whatever the, whatever the selling price of an affordable unit, you've done the math that that actually works out.
Well, I'm not talking about.
To be able to buy a unit in an E8 housing thing. I guess that's all, I mean, I'm sitting here and trying to calculate on the spur of the moment, but I feel a little, it's hard to do right now. It would be nice to see an example of simple calculation that says, here's what do we get and here's what, it's something reasonable as to the fact that we could buy them. And I'm, I'm not so convinced that we're going to have that many opportunities. I'm a little more biased of maybe the other way of that incentive, but I don't know what other people on the planning board feel or what their own experience is about or learning about which way you want to push people, developers, at least.
Chuck.
Maybe it's a question for Abby or Marion. Hasn't the county policy been going around buying houses that would be tear downs in Sherborne, modest houses?
Yes.
And buying them, putting them in affordable housing stocks rather than, I mean.
Other towns as well. So it's done. It's done. You know, it depends on what's available for purchase and things like that.
Prices, right.
Yeah.
I would just like to say a simple example of what it looks like. Just give me a case study of some, of some finances, if that, that would work out for my, as a, as a resident trying to see that it makes sense.
Yeah, I think case study makes sense. Darrell.
I think that for properties where they think it's going to be a tear down, the price might be somewhat elevated. So are we, might this work out where you would need three payments for three separate, you know, developers paid off the three units and then take those three payments to buy one affordable unit? So I don't know. I just don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
And are we trying to get one for one or not?
So we, I mean, we certainly, inclusionary zoning is something that the planning board had been working on prior to even my becoming part of the planning board. So it goes back at least nine years of hacking at it and thinking about it and putting it to rest with the idea that a lot of towns have inclusionary zoning and it doesn't get utilized in some, in many cases because it is an expense to developers. However, it's a tool in the toolbox and we're attempting to put forth something that would potentially assist us in continuing to increase our affordable housing. Whether it actually creates a, a unit with each subdivision, of course, we also don't have that many subdivisions outside of 40Bs in Sherborne. So that's another reason why it doesn't get utilized that often. But there's potential, you know, if we are in the next year or two at a point where we are at 10%, would be wonderful. And then we are just looking for something to give us that little edge to just keep maintaining. And if there's a way to, there are some naturally affordable houses throughout town that are smaller, and it'd be wonderful if this was a tool that would enable us to maintain those smaller houses and, and have some housing diversity throughout town.
Okay, so just to, you know, again, from the outside, that might be something worth explaining in town, you know, not necessarily looking for one for one.
So, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Darrell. Sorry. My ears are.
I'm talking out. So it would be helpful to have it explained whether or not, or just if not having one for one, so it sounds like maybe it's not.
Whether, whether a payment in lieu would create a unit?
Yes.
Most, so what we hear from, in most scenarios, payment in lieu is just not possible to actually create a unit, just given development cost. It's much less expensive for a developer who already has his equipment in place and has the land in place and has all the materials and the workmen. You know, certainly our own experience in trying to build things in town will, will show that, yes, that amount of money is, is probably not in and of itself going to create a unit. But there could be opportunities where something that's been created in the past, that there's a house that's older that needs rehabbing, or there's a condo. The example that we've talked about is maybe up at, on Kendall Avenue, some of the Sherborne Meadows condos. Some of them are naturally affordable and one of those might be an opportunity to purchase and convert to a deed-restricted S H I unit. So there could be creative opportunities. Again, this is, it's not a perfect solution, but we're attempting to add the opportunities available to us to try and gain control over 40Bs and affordable housing in town.
Okay, so the upside of that is that it gives you greater flexibility to choose.
Correct.
Okay.
Case histories. So we'll prepare some case histories and, again, we can, we can change the formula, but we'll do it with some case histories to judge that. Anything else? Then I think that's, it's been a great discussion. It's very, very helpful. So I think if, if there's nothing else, then we'll, I have to look at our agenda. I think we'll.
All right. I'd like to close the housing partnership meeting and thank the housing partnership members and the members of the housing trust working group for attending tonight. Thank you.
So next on our agenda, just so, so is to, we're going to consider revisions to the open space subdivision, and there's some important revisions to discuss. So you're, you're welcome to, to stay.
Can I start? Are we required to stay?
Well, you are, Chuck.
Yes.
We can deliberate. We're in an open meeting.
Yes. I just figured that out.
Thank you, everybody who, who's still here. Thank you for coming. Do you want to?
Sure. For, for the people remaining, I know some of you were here last week when we discussed in some detail the open space subdivision bylaw, the revised open space subdivision bylaw. So I don't want to start from scratch and go through the whole thing, but it would be useful if everybody got one of these little charts that I passed out. It looks sort of detailed. I know your eyes will glaze over when you see something like this, but I just want to point out a few of the highlights of what we've changed since 2018 and what we changed this week, actually. Let me say right from the start, what we did change this week was we got enough opinions, outside opinions and legal opinion to give us the confidence that we can allow open space subdivisions by right, which we were doing anyway, but we can also require conventional subdivisions and any other kind of subdivision to require a special permit. So that's, that's a big change.
Big deal.
It's a big deal. Yeah, because it very much gives the planning board the upper hand in assuming open space subdivisions. Conventional subdivision, now, the state does require that a developer must have the right to build a subdivision, but the type is not specified in state law. There is one caveat, and that is the legal minds that I've consulted are pretty sure that a conventional subdivision could be required, could be by right if it's shown to be environmentally and for all the purposes of the open space subdivision, better. If it's shown to protect the sensitive environmental features of the land, better than an open space subdivision would do. And we discussed, I discussed with Daryl at length today, there are probably very few situations in which a developer, a developer could claim that completely consuming the entire parcel with lawns and driveways and asphalt is better than conserving 60% of the land as forest. And, you know, the, the placement of septics can be a problem when, when development is constricted to a smaller area of the land, like 40%. But on the other hand, placement of septics is a problem with any subdivision in this town. So we're deferring to the Board of Health to tell us, you know, what is, Board of Health regulations-wise acceptable when to tell us, you know, what is, Board of Health regulations wise, acceptable when we have an open space subdivision concept. But the other point, that's the big thing. The other point that I, I made in our session on this last week was that it's important to understand that many or most of the environmental controls on subdivisions are not in the bylaws at all. The bylaws control size, frontage, dimensions of all kinds. The planning board regulations have much more detail as to environmental controls and how the process for subdivision design and approval works with the planning board. So, with the help of Board of Health and CONCOM, thank you all very much. You've put in a lot of time on this already and we're asking for even a little more. We've revised the planning board regulations covering subdivisions to strengthen the environmental protections. And there are a lot of, a lot of strengthening, a lot of points that are strengthened in those regulations. We'll have a separate hearing focused on the regulations alone. And I think at this point, we still have discussions to be had with Planning Board and CONCOM concerning the details of those regulations. But I think the bylaw itself, given the fact that at this point we, we defer to CONCOM and Board of Health for wetland and septic and, and well protections, I think the plan, the, the bylaw itself is about as good as we can get at, at this point. So-
I don't want to interrupt you, Marion.
Yeah.
Well, the question I have is, I may be, it seems like in some instances, highlighted yellow sections are being removed.
Oh, no. The highlighted yellow sections simply indicate, this is a change from two years ago when we put forth a draft bylaw that, that was not-
I'm having trouble following your logic there.
Oh, sorry. Maybe I should just explain the chart a little better. Sorry.
Well, I'm not sure if you're planning to use this like in town meetings.
No, this is much too complex for a town meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
This is just for the aficionados.
Well, you need to show people what the difference, what the change, almost like a redlining, I think, so they understand what the change is. I'm not, it may be me being dense here, not giving credit for that, but I'm not following what the change might be.
The change in language is highlighted in yellow. It, it highlights where we've changed. And to see exactly what the change is, you have to go back to the center column. That's what we proposed in 2018. For example, take housing types, the third thing down.
Yes.
If you look at the center column, we proposed that duplexes or multifamily housing would be allowed by special permit from the planning board. People were worried about multifamily housing and the fact that the planning board might allow multifamily housing where the town doesn't want it and where it's not appropriate. So now we will allow duplexes by special permit, but no multifamily. That's sort of how that thing works.
I guess I'm wondering, because not everybody's lived through that, through that experience, almost like we should compare the proposed bylaw to what the actual-
Yes.
-bylaw is now versus prior year proposal.
Yeah, you're right. The, the bylaw that we have now is over in the left-hand column.
Yeah, I see that.
But the, this, this scheme is really for reference. It's really not a good public relations tool.
No, I understand that, but I'm trying to make sure that it's as clear as it can be. Because you're going to have the final language. I'm wondering how people will understand it.
Well, we have the final language in the bylaw.
Yeah, I've read it already.
And-
Could you give us some more thought, Marion? I don't want to hold up the meeting.
Right.
Well, your point's good. I, I think maybe looking at some people didn't realize that the left-hand column is the current bylaw.
Yes.
In the middle, we all remember in detail what was discussed in 2018.
It's new.
Yep.
But, so, so the focus was really saying, hey, we got, we got the, the feedback from the 2018 town meeting was the idea's great.
Yes.
And so, but there were, there were issues. So we've thought, Marion has led the charge to methodically go through those issues.
It may, I love that logic. The only concern is someone that wasn't there in 2018, it might be wasted on them.
Oh, you're, you're absolutely right, Jeff. And this is not intended for town meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I know that.
Not at all.
You may have to-
Yep.
Right.
Explain.
That's right. I mean-
I'm not, it's impressive myself.
No, I think we got it.
No, no, it, it's well taken. I, I understand. This, I put together just because people asked, well, what's different from 2018? And, well, what do we have now? So I tried to get all of those things answered on one page, which is not a good idea.
All right. What am I, can I just-
Yeah, right. It's more a reference, but, you know, last week, I had a PowerPoint presentation that simplified it a lot. And at town meeting, I'll have an even more simplified PowerPoint presentation.
Well, the big news is, we don't, the, the big news compared to our last Planning Board meeting discussion about this, is that conventional subdivision doesn't need to be maintained as a by right. That's just a big deal. So then the town really has to decide. So how do you want to see us in 30 years? Do you want to see us with more conventional subdivisions or more open space, conserved open space design?
And built into the regulations is the process that we would use for an open space subdivision that would start with a preliminary meeting with the developer, in which we look at the, at the, at the parcel. No houses, just the parcel. Walk the parcel. And delineate the environmentally sensitive features that are absolutely out of bounds for development. And then try to identify areas that would work for development. And hopefully identify areas that might support a septic system. But we know how tricky and local that is in this town. But we would get an overview of, you know, what we're trying to do on this parcel. Other towns that have had this and conventional subdivisions, I'm thinking of Westford in particular, they have a, a bylaw that allows both by right. They, no, actually, it's conventional is by right and, and open space in Westford is still by special permit, although they want to change that. But they have a procedure whereby a developer has to come in with a sketch plan of a conventional and an open space. Just a sketch plan.
Yeah, that one was back there for a long time.
Yeah, that sort of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
And it doesn't have to be exactly exact, but it has to take into account the environmentally sensitive areas. And in their experience, you know, approaching it like that in a sort of friendly way with the developer, they've had over 20 open space subdivisions built and only a couple conventional ones. Because what they end up with is a development that is much more inspiring and even marketable to buyers. So, you know, it's both in the environments and sometimes in the developer's interest, certainly in the buyer's interest because the maintenance costs are so much less. You get this huge shared open space that everyone has a right to enjoy without the maintenance costs. And there's a lot to say for going this way.
There may be parcels you couldn't develop, put out going this way. Also, remember the property, 37 acre property, looked at in land acquisition off of Hunting Lane, where it was constrained site and you really couldn't do single family. So, it may be properties that would otherwise be developable, developable, used, developable, to be able to generate value to the town.
I bet that wouldn't work with this.
Say-
I, I don't think this would enable, if it can't be done by conventional, I don't think this will-
You don't think so?
I don't think so.
No, no, I don't think so. It couldn't, if it couldn't be done by conventional, well, you could always do-
Let's say it was all ledge, let's say it's largely ledge and you couldn't put single septic systems.
Or if like it's 30% wetlands and-
Yeah.
You could still do a conventional subdivision. It would just be a very small one. But in this case, it would still be a very small one.
Right.
You know, having worked out on a couple of subdivisions, how the math goes, with the way you determine the number of residential units allowed, you would, you could get as many or almost as many units as a conventional subdivision. Or you could get somewhat less. But it's not a dramatic difference if you work out the math. The advantage is that with an open space subdivision, if it is a property with, with a lot of wetlands, you can, you can cite the developmental, the developed part, you know, in a way that doesn't impact the wetlands. But a caveat that is new in this, that I think is important, is in order to prevent a developer from just putting all the wetlands in the open space and getting, you know, give the same number of lots or more lots all crammed into the uplands, we're requiring that at least 50% of the open space be uplands. So-
Based on the answers.
Your slideshow would be, would be useful.
Yeah, I've got nice pictures. Well-
Well, it illustrates.
It illustrates how that works.
All right.
Yes.
Citizen Stephanie Harrison, Mason Hall Road. Marion, I have a question for you. The Westford example that you gave, where you were directly comparing open space and conventional, was there a density bonus in the open space subdivision? Because I feel like that would be a different apples to oranges.
Right. You know, I've got that bylaw, but I didn't bring it with me.
Okay. I'm just curious if there was some incentive for the developers to go-
Yeah, other, other than the beauty and all that.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. I'll check on that. We considered density bonuses here, but, you know, you don't really need a density bonus if it's by right.
Right.
And if a conventional is by, yeah, in Westford though, that might have been, I'll look into that. Michael?
Michael, that's 54th Forest. Going back, I guess you already did the bylaw, but I get essentially, I want to ask a question about the bylaw changes and such, that enables whatever you do in the regulations. And I did see that, the last version I recall in the bylaw, does include stuff for infrastructure where you allow for some greater offsets between, let's say, septic and wetlands, that you can then play out in the regulations when we get to that part. But I can't remember whether there's something in the bylaw that there's issues in some of the draft regs about requiring or involving some ongoing monitoring of, let's say, impacts from, let's say, large septics down, down gradient, let's say, which could be on wetlands or other sensitive receptors. Whether there's even, whether you need or you already have some enabling bylaw wording that if you want to pursue or require some sort of ongoing monitoring, doesn't say that you have to do any more than that, but that you actually have a basis requiring that. Because we often have the issue of, there's not a lot of good science out there and there's always a lot of fight about where's stuff going and this and that. And I think the ability to basically at least require some monitoring could be a useful tool for us to get information that isn't overly burdensome cost-wise on the developer. But is that in the bylaw? I can't remember.
Yeah. We, we refer to that possi, let me tell you what we say in the bylaw. The caveat though, is that the planning board can't require certain setbacks that are under CONCOM jurisdiction. And we can't supplant CONCOM regulations.
But you can go beyond CONCOM regulations.
Well, I'll tell you how we, we tried to do that. But we can't do that by, we can't have regulations that nullify your regulations.
No, no, that's not whatever was asked in the draft that I proposed, is not doing that. It was more a matter of making sure the bylaw allowed you to have greater, it's like a lot of, a lot of regulations, a lot of things. You can always go greater. You could also, in the interest of groundwater protection, whatever.
Michael, just, and Darrell, actually, since both of your points are something that's really important to our discussion, would it be possible to have you both come to the table so that we can hear both sides, so it doesn't sound like a one-sided conversation?
Yeah, that, that would be nice if both you and Darrell came.
I'll be helping for the moment.
Let me tell you what we have done, Michael.
Yes.
Let me tell you what we have done. Under infrastructure, we say Board of Health Regulations Regarding Water Supply Protection and the Disposable, Disposal of Wastewater and Conservation Commission Regulations Regarding Wetland Protections Shall Apply. Protection of Clean Water Resources Will Be A Primary Factor In Planning Board Decisions Regarding Placement Of Residential Units And Overall Subdivision Design. Clustered Or Shared Septic Systems Are Likely To Require Setbacks Greater Than Standard Single Family Systems To Prevent Negative Impacts, Et Cetera, And Therefore May Require Specific Analyses To Determine Such Setbacks And Subsequent Monitoring To Determine Their Effectiveness. And that, that's your language, but we say, notice we say "may require."
Oh, yeah, no, that's perfectly fine. I forgot the monitor.
Because the requirements are up to you guys.
I forgot the last words, and I didn't have a copy with me. You, you've answered the question.
Okay, great.
I remembered the first wording. I forgot about the monitoring parts of that.
Yeah.
We can have a discussion later about what goes in under monitoring of the regs. But that seems to allow that sort of work to be done in the regulation changes and design of those things. Okay.
That's right.
And that answers the, that's all of us. I couldn't remember those words, and I didn't have a copy of it. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
I mean, I could go on with the details, but, you know, we are going to have a, a final hearing on this on the 26th. And in the meantime, we'll post the final bylaw. And in the meantime, you and I will go over the regulations again. We have incorporated a lot of your comments into the regulations, Michael. But, but we can't, even in our regulations, require a specific setback in feet from wetlands, because that's just not in our jurisdiction.
Well, that's the thing we could talk about, because I don't, I don't understand the logic of that, that, that you, I'd be curious to get a town council opinion about that, because I don't see that, I can, I can believe that you couldn't require less than what we have, but you certainly have the option, you might not want to exercise it or agree to it, that you could, certainly you could have greater setbacks. And unless you get some opinion, because you will have some of the same interests or things that you're trying to protect, that a greater setback could defend, it could be part of it.
Absolutely, yeah.
So therefore, I, I don't see, you have to, you might disagree with doing it, but I don't see that you don't have the right to have a greater setback than the Wetland Protection Act has for those things. And that's-
Well, I think in general-
That's a policy decision.
I think in general, when we have houses closer, closer together, that may have septic systems closer together, we will cite, you know, we have the jurisdiction to cite the developable portion where the 40% of that developable land will be on the site. And of course, with input from you guys, we would cite that away from the wetlands, probably with greater setbacks. But we're not going to be able to pass, I don't think, specific setbacks or regulations that are like yours but stricter in such detail.
I think you can, but that's, I would like-
I think that's a town council question.
You just should get an opinion on it, because I don't want to, I don't have to go back and forth. I just don't see where you're constrained. I mean, it is tricky, but we could have a formula about it, about how many, how large a septic is, therefore it's a, it's 100 feet plus, plus eight feet per 100 gallons per day. You can have formulas that get complicated. I was, they get a little, I was trying to strike a balance of something that's a little more clear cut upfront for developers. I don't want to overdo the burden on developers. I just want to get at least some, sort of something that gives a little more protection, and they have the right to rebut it. But I think you can do it, unless you get some other opinion. So I, I must just disagree that you can't do it, that you might not want to. that you can't do it, it's, you might not want to, but I think you should.
So, so did we not try some language and get some feedback from...
Yeah, we did. We have some language in the regulations about monitoring, et cetera, but we don't have like a foot setback per size of septic system.
I mean, I, I sent that to you as a comment, and the question is whether you want to entertain it or you don't want, or you want to get an opinion.
I get, I understand your point.
Yes.
So Marion, I thought we got some feedback from town council. Am I wrong?
No, we don't, not on that.
Well, then I think we should.
We should, yeah. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I don't want to spend time going over to pee the horse around.
But, yeah, if we...
Unless, unless you guys wouldn't do it anyway.
But, no, if we were to take that responsibility, we would have to have all the expertise that CONCOM has in order to determine the setbacks in feet and exactly how the monitoring would be done. We don't have that expertise. So how do we do that? I mean, that's kind of where we're at.
I, well, okay, I think if it's a specific number that, that has some basis for it, then you don't have to justify it, and then, right, you might have to have some sort of peer review of it and say, no, we don't think that this is a problem here, and they want to redo their, I don't know whether the planning board has the ability in a, in a plan review to have some consultant support to review if a developer says, okay, I don't think I have to do any of that, that it's not going to be a problem, whether you have that mechanism. Conservation Commission has a setup where people can provide a basis for not following certain things or to provide some more evidence, and then we have a basis for getting some review of that, that we don't have the expertise ourselves. But you go out and you, and you get a tiny little contract, and we can make the, we can make the applicant pay for that.
So it sounds like CONCOM is set up to do that.
No, but we cannot go beyond a certain distance, because we're not used to dealing with these larger systems. Therefore, we're trying to see whether you can provide a little extra defense in the cases where, because we cannot exceed 100 feet, to be very specific, whereas you probably have, and you can get your opinion, that you could go further than that. And then you could still have, allow people to dispute that need for that, which is fine. But I think you can go further than 100 feet, which is more standard for a small, single-family septic system, and we're looking at larger systems, and therefore say, maybe have a 200-foot thing for, for a certain large septic system of 2,000 gallons per day, which is the draft that I suggested, is trying to keep it much simple. And that's, clearly recognizes a very, as a significantly large system, and that, I don't, I don't think there would be any powers defending it as a, as a number and saying, fine, that should be 200 feet. Now, they can comfortably try to, as I said, apply alternative, some substantive technical information, saying they don't need it.
That's right. And then how do we respond, because we don't have the technical background?
Do you have no mechanism to review a technical request? Is that something that the planning board does not have access to in terms of process?
I'm curious what, Darrell, I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Okay, I was getting ready to actually address something else, but I will say that I think it's very hard to apply formulas easily to these kind of situations as we venture out into new patterns of development that we haven't seen septic applied to all that much in this country, even though the rest of our stuff is run by equations, but somebody else set that up. And so for us to choose what that equation will be is difficult. I think part of the recommendation for monitoring is, is part of the planning board figuring out how the planning activities are going. So it's a little bit, it's a different approach to it, perhaps, rather than the upfront is test and see how the things proceed, and we don't have that in, in the Board of Health Regulations at the moment. But then, while I'm here, the other thing I had discussed this with Marion earlier today is, the point is to use existing Board of Health Regulations and just have them apply, and for the most part, that will work fine, but I do believe that Title V, which is mostly what we have with our few minor specialties in Sherborne, has some assumption, and all these single-family home septic systems have some assumption about dilution. And so when you start compressing things into a smaller space, as we saw with the fields at Sherborne, you can get, you know, a very, a plume of effluent that far exceeds the drinking water standards. It was three times at the fields, traveling a great distance, and that's a steady state condition. So there's no guarantee that's not happening somehow by septic systems in some areas, but we just don't know enough about it. I don't really think anyone knows enough about it, because I've been trying to talk to people around the country about, does anybody know how to deal with this? And I have not been getting a lot of feedback that helps us out. So as part of that, there are some new grant monies available in the state. They involve partnering with another town, so I've been talking with Dover, we're trying to come up with something that we would share that might help shed light on these kinds of issues. We may be borrowing some stuff from Carlisle, who I think is the town most like us, and they've been doing some things kind of parallel to what we've been doing, but a little differently. So I might contact them and see if we can come up with some projects that would add to our understanding, so that we don't at some point go, oh, this looks great on the surface, and the use of land is great, but oops, you know, there was this unintended consequence, and that's just what I think the Board of Health would like to avoid, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll be trying for that, but of course, those applications are due February 27th.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's not realistic in time for town meeting, so, you know...
Oh, no, but that grant would be done completely, so, oh, in terms of understanding, right.
Yeah, in terms of...
We've got some loopholes that we are not going to be able to address if this passes and goes into effect immediately. I guess that's the other thing I'll talk to the Board of Health about, is would we ask you to just have a delay until we can maybe do a couple more tweaks that we think we have discussed, but we haven't put pen to paper to work out how it fits into the language of our regulation, and just say, could it start after, after we get that in place if we decide to do that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I know it's not easy to change your regulation, I totally appreciate it, same with CONCOM. I know you've made an attempt to change regulations, and it's, it's just not easy. And in both cases, it's because there's no easy way to measure these things, and we're all working on assumptions, and the planning board just as, as much as you. But I think for the purposes of this bylaw, for now, we have to assume that your regulations will, will apply, and we'll work together to make sure that the citing of the developable area is as safe as it can possibly be, which is the best we can do. And, and we'll look at the language of the, of the regulations, but there are going to be parcels that simply cannot be developed this way. I mean, it's not going to work on every parcel. So for now, I think we maybe just have to accept that it's not, it's not perfect yet. But it's better than, you know, the way subdivisions are now, there's just as many unknowns, the way septic systems are often much closer to the wetlands than they would be in this case. So, I don't know, we just have to talk some more. I don't want to prolong this too much. I think I understand what your concerns are. I know I understand what your concerns are, and we share your concerns. It's just a matter of what we can do from a planning board, you know, jurisdiction, and what you can do.
Just to follow up a little, not to go, so that the next time we talk about this, whether, whether more of your half concerned, whether you have, you have the ability to write some specific regulations, such as a distance setback that's, that, such as one I proposed.
Mm-hmm.
I guess it'd be useful to know from town council as well as whether you do have a mechanism and a review to get some technical assistance. I guess I'd be curious, that issue of whether you can, and you're reviewing a plan, and there are technical issues that, let's say, might not come before Conservation Commission or Board of Health, because they come under, they might fit under this. I just wonder whether you do have a mechanism...
Yeah, I think I understand your question, and I guess we can, we'll find out, we, our next meeting is...
26.
Is that our next meeting? I thought we had one in between. February 18th?
No, we don't have the 18th. We changed it to the following week.
All right. So I think we, we can find out.
Yeah.
We do, we do require things like traffic impact and things like that. So the question is whether we can do that sort of thing, we can require a peer review study for something that's Conservation or Board of Health bailiwick.
Right.
I get the question, we'll find out.
To address your concern about whether you can actually review it if you have more strength. Okay? So is that two things to find out?
And in any case, planning board would be consulting with Board of Health and CONCOM when we talk about citing things and distances. I mean, you're our first resource on that, so...
Yeah, okay, good. Anything else? I think we've run the gamut and got some, again, we thank you very much for...
Yeah, thanks. This was useful. It's great to have both of you here, kill two birds with one stone.
We don't have anything else on our agenda. We have a very specific agenda, so, thank you. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Listen to adjourn.
Further discussion, all those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.